I got a big spot. We have, we have, you know, I mean, you're never working. I need to make my time. And you know what the good thing on the day is? It's, it's so true. Those guys, you know, but then they have these guys who die. Well, they have a, they're in the suburbs of town and seriously, all that team is more than happy. They, they have us. Yeah. 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 That's a citizen. Yeah. 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 Last name Scott. I saw you there. I knew you were talking to no idea. Okay. Yeah. But I was odd double checking to make sure that I've got here. No, I'm sure you didn't. Have you sent that in your notes to? Not to, not to council. Yeah. 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 Long ear. Long ear. Yeah. 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 Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for February sixth, twenty twenty four, and at seven twelve P M. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Ross.
Present.
Council member Ma.
Present.
Council member Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all council members and mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Next, we have close session announcements.
Nothing to announce out at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have, are there any changes to the agenda, council? Seeing none, moving forward. Next, we have citizen comments. This, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with the state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Are there any citizen comments on the phone? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Are there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to a dais, closing citizen comments at seven fourteen. Next, we have announcements and reports. City staff announcements and reports. John Ramirez, acting chief of police, with the police department update.
Testing, testing. Good evening, council. Good evening, members of the public. So tonight, I'm going to go over a little bit of some of the police department's functions that we've been doing, a little bit of an update. Most of this stuff is going to be coming from last year, although I have a couple items from this year that I'll also be bringing up. So the first slide I have, I want to show our mission. So the mission of the police department is to provide professional law enforcement services intended to impact the quality of life through commitment, education, community, and partnership. And a little bit of background on that, over the last, I believe, about five years ago, we updated it because we had one that was kind of, had been in there for twenty-plus years. So members of the department came up with some wording and some things that we value to come up with our new mission statement, which we currently have. So currently, our staffing, we have one acting chief of police slash lieutenant, which I'm assuming both roles right now. We have, currently have three sergeants, three police corporals, nine officers, two detectives, two unpaid reserves. We have one school resource officer at Livingston Middle School. We have one administrative services manager, one communication records manager. We have one code compliance officer, six full-time dispatchers. We have two part-time dispatchers and one office assistant for a total of thirty-three staff right now. This right here is actually a picture we took in twenty twenty-three for a Christmas card we sent out. I think some of the council members or all of the council members should have received the card. But we actually took this, I believe, in June or July, when it was really hot, so we can get the right timing to get a Christmas photo. So some of the faces you see there, it's a little bit hot and sweaty, so, but we were able to do it. So this is some stats I wanted to share for twenty twenty-three, and obviously, these are not all the numbers for every crime or every call that we took. But the Livingston Police Department Communication or Dispatch handled over thirty-five-hundred nine-one-one calls and handled over twenty-four thousand non-emergency calls, and that includes Gustine and the city of Livingston, since we also dispatched for the city of Gustine. The total number of incidents itself is thirty thousand. Total number of cases handled is going to be almost twelve hundred. The total number of vehicle collisions is a hundred and twenty-six. The total number of fatal collisions, thank goodness, is zero. DUI vehicle collisions equals five, and the total number DUI arrests was forty-two for the year. Misdemeanor arrest was two ninety-four, and felony arrest was one forty-eight, almost, almost half of that. And the total number of citations issued is nine hundred and thirty-four. That includes parking citations as well. So those are our numbers for the, for the year. And then just some highlights that, talking with some of the officers and kind of going back through, throughout the year, I know I've sent a little bit bigger list to Christopher, but just some things I wanted to mention. One of the first things was hiring the first code enforcement officer, which the council had a big part in getting that going for us, and it's been working well with Officer Eddie Mogato. He's been on for, since March of last year, so he's almost been here a full year, and he's, he's done a lot of good work. It is, it was the first time we've ever had a code enforcement officer, so we had to kind of learn. I was put in charge of him and kind of getting to know the codes I was not acclimated to and doing different things that I had never done before. So I've actually learned a lot as well over the eleven months. We've also remodeled the police department. So we received funding for a officer wellness grant last year, and we spent most of the money on revamping our gym. I don't, I think, believe some of the council members have seen the gym. I know some of the staff, Christopher's using the gym out there with us. So that was something I thought was vital. I did take a poll with the department members on how we could use the grant money, and this was one of the main things that they came up with. We also have a massage chair that officers are able to go in and kind of de-stress a little bit during their shift. So it's, it's worked out really well. I've been here twenty-five-plus years, and I've never seen the gym used more than it has been in the last three months. So it's, it's, we've been utilizing it a lot, so. We've also hired two full-time dispatchers, and we have, which, which makes us full staff at six full-time. It's been four-plus years that we've had full staffing and dispatch, and as of today, I can say the dispatchers, the two new dispatchers are doing a great job. They're going through their training, and they're probably in their last couple, two or three weeks of training, hopefully, and then they'll be out by themselves. We also started a range, the shooting range beautification project. That, a lot of that money is being used from the money that we're charging agencies to use our range now, which for the year is twelve hundred dollars, for each day is a hundred and twenty dollars. So I think right now, we have about seven agencies that are paying yearly, which is adding money to the general fund, but we're able to utilize some of that money to do upgrades at the range. And I, I did have some, several pictures here, but had to keep my slides below fifteen, so I, I really wish I would have been able to show those pictures, but it's, it's looking really nice, and because of the weather, we've kind of stopped the project, but we've been out there painting and putting some new boards in with the, the benches that we have. We've also been able to add some fire extinguishers and fix up the classrooms that we have out there, so it's, it's looking pretty nice, and we've already got good feedback from the agencies using the range. So we're pretty proud of that. We've also been able to, twenty twenty-three, we were able to get a, the Livingston Police Mounted Unit, MOU, completed and approved. That's been in the works for about ten years, and we were finally able to get it done, I believe in July of this past year, so I want to thank Christopher for assisting with that and getting that done. And then this year for Cops for Kids, this was my first time being spearheading this thing. I'd been involved in it, I didn't realize how much work it was, and I thought money and checks just kind of came in, but I learned that probably the last month, that that's not how it works, and I had to really get out there and, and ask for donations and, and meet with people that I know throughout the community of the city, along with, with some of the, the PD staff. And, you know, we were able to get about ten thousand dollars of money and gifts, so that, that worked out, and it was, it was a stressful month for me, but we were able to get it as, as a team, we were able to get it done, so I was pretty proud of that. And then we were able to purchase the JAMAR radar systems. I know that some council members have reached out with some speeding issues in certain areas of the city, and that's already been very valuable. I know that just recently, we had some complaints on Pruso between Peach and F Street. Council member Soto reached out and let us know about that. We were able to set up the JAMAR system, and we did confirm that there is a lot of speeders. I want to say there was like seventy percent of cars that go through there are in violation. The fastest speed that a car went through there on one particular evening was a hundred and five miles an hour. So we definitely see the problem. We're able to now implement our traffic resources. I have one of the sergeants that's putting a program together right now to work enforcement, so you, the citizens that are on Pruso and have been reaching out to council. You will start seeing officers, you should have already started seeing them out there, but they'll start doing enforcement and education as well, so that, that has helped us a lot, and that's something that we've been wanting to get for years. And then I believe one of the other biggest things was building our emergency operations plan. As council and Christopher have known, that we've had basically a cookie cutter program for the city, which is basically the same thing for every city in the county, and after the floods, there was some research that was done and getting some of the departments together, and that was one of the things that we started working with, with Encore Technologies. So we've been having meetings probably once a month or every two months and, and getting that going and getting an emergency operations plan that's, that's right for the city of Livingston and the residents. So I want to thank all those that have been involved with that, with the staff. And then just some of the city events that we attended. We pretty, for the most part, attend every city event, but these are some of the highlights that we have for the high school. We had every fifteen minutes that we attended, and then, of course, every year, the seat parade, the splash run, LHS band review. This is actually going to be its third year, and it's been a really good turnout. I don't know if any of you have been able to make it out to the band review. It's been a really good time. It's the first time I got to do it a couple years ago, and it's, it's been pretty fun, so I've been going out there. Of course, the LHS and LMS graduations, and then the Fourth of July event that we had last year, and then the Sweet Potato Festival that we've been having for the last many years, which is the big one, and then the street fairs that are put on by recreation. I know this year, we had our animal control officer out there doing the microchipping, I believe, for free, so that was, that was a good event to, to go to. And then VFW parade is always, is always a good one, along with the Christmas parade. This was one of the first times I got to see the, the new Christmas parade, which took about three hours to, to get through, but it was, it was a little crazy, but it was a really good time. And all the council members were out there and saw a lot of the community, and it was, it was actually really fun, so. Good job, Jackie, on that one. And then the Cops for Kids, as I mentioned a little bit ago, we've been doing that for many years now. And then one of the things that we did this year was do the neighborhood visit. That was something that I know the community's been asking for and something that I've, when I first started, was a part of, and it kind of went away, but something now that I'm in, in the position to make some changes was bring that back, and I think we had a really good time with that, and I hope to continue that this year with a few more different spots we can attend. And then just some pictures of the different events. On the left side, I believe, that's the, the color run. You have different officers there making some goofy pictures. The one up top is where we had our open house at the PD. That was probably a few weeks before Chief Hale passed. He couldn't make it that day, but we, we got it going, and we were able to still continue the function. We had a good time. To the right, we have a Christmas, Christmas picture on some donations. And then at the very bottom middle, we have our neighborhood visit that I was just talking about, that we end up going to, the sports that we end up going to the, uh, sports complex. And then to the far right corner, um, it is a nice picture of some of the command staff, but, uh, unfortunately, that was the morning before we were going to Chief Hale's funeral. And I just thought that was important to, to mention that. And then just some updates, uh, again, I talked about some twenty-twenty-four stuff. I know that, uh, some of the council members have reached out, uh, on some of these things. And so our Spain neuter program, uh, we have ten thousand dollars for vouchers that we have in our funds for the year. Uh, as, as it states in the, uh, the flyer that we put out, they must be pets and microchipped. Uh, Hillmer Vet, veterinarian is the only one that will redeem the vouchers. I know that, that's a big question people have asked, but, uh, unfortunately, they're the only ones that are able to, uh, process our vouchers. And we have explored other resources, uh, such as the shag and wagon and there's other ones out there, uh, in hopes to provide onsite, uh, Spain neuter, but have been unsuccessful due to lack of veterinarians and their staffing. So we reached out to over ten different, uh, companies and we pretty much were turned down by everybody so far. Uh, but that's, that's still not gonna stop us. It's a new year. We'll try reaching out again. And I do rec, if anybody knows any, anybody or has any recommendations for, feel free to reach out to myself or, uh, Eddie Mogato. And then the voucher pricing, it's, uh, approximately seventy-five dollars for dogs and fifteen of that is for the license and, and for the, uh, microchipping. Uh, and then it's forty-five dollars roughly for cats. So I think if you, if you do the numbers on that, I want to say it was like a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-plus dogs that would expend that ten thousand or about two-hundred-and-twenty cats, uh, for that, because I know you might have questions, how many vouchers does that equal out to? And twenty-twenty-three, I will say that we went through about seventy percent of our budget. So we burned up about seven thousand, had about three thousand left over, just to show you where the numbers are for that. And then for fireworks, I know that's, that's a, a big thing every year. Um, unfortunately, last year was our first year. We had the hosting ordinance, which we kind of really, really sure weren't, still weren't sure how that worked. I think one of the issues that we came up with was staffing last year is having the actual Fourth of July event on that day, which, which took about sixty-five, seventy percent of our manpower. Um, and when I say that, you have roughly about six or seven officers on each shift. So we had nine officers out at the Fourth of July event, which left us with six officers to cover the street twenty-four hours. So we had, I think, graveyards come in early, but unfortunately, we can't have grave, or day shift stay till two in the morning because they gotta be back at six. So I do, I do plan on beefing up patrol as much as we can, maybe put an extra detective out there. Uh, but some of the, the fines for possession, it's gonna be a hundred-and-thirty dollars for the first violation, uh, seven hundred dollars for the second and thirteen hundred dollars for the third violation. Uh, as I said, uh, we're gonna plan on using the hosting ordinance this year. We're gonna get more educated with that and, and working on how we can enforce that better. And that's gonna be for anyone that hosts a party or gathering that allows illegal fireworks. And fines are the same, mechanics see twenty-five hundred dollars within a two-year period. And again, then we'll have extra patrol on the Fourth of July. And I will be working on other possible resources over the, over the next few months. I know, uh, several years ago, we had Cal Fire Police come out with us on patrol. Um, I'm also thinking about maybe reaching out to probation, see if we can get some resources from there. But, uh, as far as Livingston Police Officers themselves, if we have a Fourth of July event, it will take a lot of our manpower, um, to the event, but we'll do what we can. And then graffiti, uh, over the past month, we've noticed an increase in gang graffiti throughout the city. And without getting into too much detail, uh, you may have some questions, but officers are currently conducting operations and gathering intel to identify and locate the, uh, the suspects. That's, that's kind of really all I can get into. I know I would love to tell you on some of the things that we're doing, but it would, it would kind of defeat its purpose with people out there, so. But we are working on it and we are, uh, we are working with other agencies at this moment, so. And then just some of the goals for the year, um, these are kind of some things I've, I came up with, uh, myself and talking to some of the, uh, other officers and just kind of seeing things that we've had in the past. But obviously, it'd be to reduce major crimes. Uh, just over the last year in itself, uh, we've actually done that from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, uh, in our robberies and major assault with deadly weapons, uh, our shootings and attempted murders. And, uh, thank goodness, our murders, we did not have a homicide in twenty-twenty-three, so that's, that's good. And then start a traffic unit, that's something that, um, we definitely need to do. We used to have a traffic unit, uh, gosh, twenty years ago. And we do have officers that can ride our motorcycles that do not get utilized, but that's something that I would like to bring back and some of the sergeants have already expressed interest in doing that. Uh, we definitely need a traffic unit and to be able to enforce the traffic laws here better than we do right now. And then obviously finish up the emergency operations plan. That's, that's probably one of the big things for the year to get that going, in case we do have a, a major emergency, that we gotta have something planned that's set for Livingston, not for Atwater, not for Wynn, but that's something that is for Livingston. And also that other agencies can, can utilize resources that we may have. So right now, we're, we're finding out what resources we have available and what resources that other agencies have available for us if we needed it. And then finish the Shooting Range Project is, is another big, big thing. That range has not been touched or worked on since Chief Aldrich was here. Uh, many of you know that Chief Aldrich will be out there mowing, mowing the lawn and taking care of that thing. It was beautiful and I, I plan on, on getting that back. Not so beautiful because it's gonna be tough to get grass in there, but, uh, we, we've done a lot of improvement already and I really, I really am proud of that. And, you know, when you go out there, you, the first thing you see is that this is the Livingston Police Department Range, which you haven't been able, you haven't seen that sign in fifteen-plus years. And now when you go out there, you see that and it's just, uh, we take pride in that. And then one of the biggest things again is increa, increased community outreach. Um, I know when, you know, when I first started, that was, you know, you want to take bad guys to jail and that's how a lot of the new officers think, but, you know, after twenty-five-plus years, you kind of change, change the way you do things and, uh, reaching out to the community is big for me. Once I started working with, um, gangs, narcotics and, and all that stuff, ten-plus years ago, one of the things I, over the last five years, I talked about was, you know, getting to the youth and, and the community itself and letting them understand what, what, what violence could bring with gangs and narcotics. And getting into schools, we just, um, one of my big things was getting the officers in the schools. And over the last eight months or since school started, we've already had, um, staff from the school and the superintendent reach out to us that they're seeing the, the officers out there, uh, like they haven't been in many, many years and, and giving us a pat on the back. So I'm really proud of that. The men and women of the department have been going out there and you'll see them at the schools. They're having, uh, playtime with the kids, they're going to reading, going at lunchtime. And it's, um, it's, 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 I mean, valuable. I mean, that's something you can't take back, reaching out to, you know, some of the youth around here. So I think that's, that's big and that's one of, one of my big, big things as a goal, whether it's lieutenant or the chief of police, is to continue reaching out and having them, the men and women continue doing that in the department. And I knew I, I wasn't gonna try to hopefully take a long time, but that's all I have. Any feedback or comments from council?
Well, you know, thank you for that, that update in that presentation. And, uh, at the same time, make sure that you, uh, extend my, uh, thanks to the, uh, police explorers, because a lot of, uh, the activities that you mentioned, you know, um, they're a big part of, a big support out there, you know, um, and, uh, they're always very active and, uh, it's good to see them out there. And I appreciate that, um, um, I know that this last few weeks, month, last month or so, I've been getting a lot of, uh, concerns in regards to graffiti and I always, you know, um, sometimes I feel like, um, I, I just want to make sure that you guys don't get overwhelmed by, by, by everything that I forward to you guys. But, you know, that is, I always tell people that, uh, by them sending their concerns to us, we become aware of what those problem areas might be that we might not be able to see all the time or on time. So, um, you know, I, you know, I just make sure that I always forward that information to you guys as well. And, uh, and, and thank you guys for, for being very active on that. And, um, one of the other areas that you also mentioned was the, um, fireworks. I know that, um, I actually just recently, about two weeks ago, I had someone reach out just already kind of like, you know, what are we gonna, what do we have planned for, for, to take care of those, of that situation? You know, so it's good that you included in, in, in here and, and kind of give a, an update on. Uh, and, and you also mentioned, and I was gonna mention it, you know, to reach out to outs, outside agencies, but you already mentioned that.
Yeah.
So, so that's good and I appreciate that. And, um, and congratulations on being out there at the school. I, I seen some of the pictures that were sent to me and, uh, and, and it's good. It's positive of being out there with the kids and stuff. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure who was reading to who, but, you know, it's all good. It's a good picture.
They're probably reading to the officers.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, council, questions?
If I could add something real quick too, I, I kind of passed over this slide and I did have a photograph of our explorers. And as you can see at the bottom there, I, I wanted to send a shout out to the Livingston Explorers post-five-eighteen. Um, I did bypass it over because I can't really see what's on my glasses, but that is something I wanted to make sure I mentioned. So thank you for, uh, for letting me know about that. I did have a picture of them. I, I took it down, those, to try to keep my slides down. But I just wanted to get that on record that they did an amazing job.
And, and something that I want to mention, it's, um, there's a small group, a, a small rescue group that, um, that has been formed here in the city and I, I want to be able to reach out later. Uh, uh, and probably have them put a meeting together to work, see how they can be supportive of the Spain neuter program or anything else that, the, the, because then again, um, animal control cannot do everything and be everywhere at the same time. But then again, how can, you know, they be supported as well?
Yeah.
If there's, if there's a way, just to kind of brainstorm and put, bring some ideas together.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah. All right, council?
Just a big thank you to you and your department. It's a tough job, but you guys do it well and I really, really appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And same for me. Thank you very much. Thanks to the explorers. Thanks for everything you guys do and participate in. We are very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Again, I want to extend a great big thanks for all that you presented tonight. I did have a few things written down. Um, one, I think you covered, but I had one more specific. Um, with the communication with other law enforcement agencies, such as the Atwater and County and finding, um, the criminals who murdered Livingston residents. Is there any, I know that, that's, it's not within our jurisdiction, but Atwater and, and County that, uh, over this past year, what, how is that communication going?
So I can't speak on too much on, ongoing investigation. I can't tell you that it is ongoing and I can tell you just as early as last week, we had conversations, uh, with other agencies and officers. And I really feel that this year, uh, we're gonna make some very big strides that the community and public will be happy with.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Also, in your Spain neuter, you did mention there was ten thousand dollars. You expended seven thousand, so where's, what happens to that other three thousand? Does it get rolled over back into the program?
So as far as I know, it goes back into the general fund. So this year we'll get another ten thousand that we'll have to use. I know that, um, some of the equipment that we already have that we don't need to buy, like, uh, for instance, the microchips. So I learned that we had, I don't know, a couple hundred of them because I wanted to buy some. And one of the ideas was that myself and Eddie came up with, why don't we have a free microchip clinic? And that was what we did at downtown. But we, turnout wasn't as good as we expected. So we do have some items that we don't need to spend money on, but we do have money available. Um, as I mentioned, you know, there was about seven thousand dollars that were spent, um, for the fiscal year. And we still have, what, another four months left, so. And we, we did get a big increase though, when we put something on social media, we got a huge increase on, on our voucher program. So it, it's, it's went up this year a lot.
Good. And I did notice that the Livingston Police Department is more active on social media by putting, posting up updates because I knew that, uh, I think maybe it was two years ago, maybe Sergeant Fong was in charge of the social media. Now we're starting to see many more posts. So I like that the community is getting the information from the police department firsthand.
Yeah, that's something, you know, just in some of the schools I've attended recently, that, that's a big thing nowadays, uh, social media and reaching out to your communities. And I will say that our social media is not the best, but we're working on doing some things. Um, it's just a matter of getting the right people in place and, and putting those updates out there. Because one of the big problems, if we have one person doing social media and they're off that weekend that something big comes out or there's an event going on, then we have to wait for them to put it on their day off. And that's kind of some of the problems we're having, uh, some issues with. Um, but that is something this year that I would really like to see our social media, uh, platform get better with.
Wonderful. Um, also you did mention, uh, well, just talked about was the, the graffiti I did and the, the gang graffiti. I know that we don't want to have our own, and, and I'll be the first one to say that, yeah, I did it and I took care of it myself because it's a big message for us to get out there and say, you know, we don't want this kind of, uh, notice to our youth or even to our public. We want to be able to know that, that we're doing everything we can to safeguard, um, our, our residents. It's, it's, uh, was gang initiated and, uh, it's, some of the markings are still there. So if we can have those worked on immediately so that they, it, it's, it's a message that, that we're sending and it's a message that's also being sent out to our youth. And if we're trying to be in our schools and advocate for better education, we need to work both, both ways so that they see that our law enforcement officers are, it's, it's a safe place for everybody. It's a, and that's part of our job is to create and maintain the safe and health, safety and health of our, of our residents. Um, also you did mention about the Fourth of July and I'll probably talk about this a little bit later. Um, it's good to know how, um, Livingston PD is utilized on the day of Fourth of July. And Fourth of July coming up this year is gonna be on a Thursday. So moving forward with, uh, some of the plans, we'll be, we'll utilize the weekend.
Yeah.
So that'll be discussed, um, here later.
Yeah, that might, that might help a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know it's, it, it puts a strain and we don't want that.
I know one of the things the officers mentioned last year during Fourth of July, because I, I came in and asked, hey, how did it go? Were you guys able to get sites out? One of the, one of the big things is, and, and I will challenge anybody to come and jump in a cop car with anybody, with one of the officers, is that they're getting dispatched to the north side of town, but then they hear thirty other areas going off. So they're, they're literally back and forth, back and forth, call to call to call. They don't even know which house to go to or much less try to cite somebody because they're going call to call to call, literally. And that was one of the things that, because of staffing, uh, was one of the issues where we couldn't really focus on one area, which we did focus on an area, but as they were sitting there, we literally got like twenty calls to take off. And they had to, they had to break because we're getting other people calling in for calls for service. We can't just tell them, no, we're not gonna go because we're sitting at this house. So it's just, uh, we'll try to be creative this year.
Okay. Another thing you mentioned is the beautification project, there's a shooting range. It, it's great to hear. I want to be able to let you know that if in the spring or when the weather gets better, if you want to plan date, um, for the community or for me to, to also be out there to help you guys pull weeds or whatever it takes to help beautify that area so that the, that, um, I know people are already utilizing it. But if whatever help that you need, I will volunteer my time to go out there and help beautify the shooting range as well.
I appreciate that. And I will say that we've had, we've utilized Kelp, the, uh, work crews to come out and they've done an amazing job. They've been out there six times, I believe, and it's night and day. Uh, my plan with the community was once we're, we do all of the modifications that we have and, uh, we truly can say that it's been beautified, that I wanted to invite the public out there, um, to take a tour of what we've done and kind of see the facilities. I don't think that's ever happened with the public to go out there and look at the shooting range and know what we do out there. So I think that'd be a good idea. That was something I had on my radar, not necessarily having them work, but just at least go out there and, and take a look at the work that we've done.
Perfect. If you need help setting that up, I will be out there helping you and possibly even do a ribbon cutting for you guys. That would be awesome.
Sounds good.
Um, one more thing, uh, hires the- One more thing, hires, we hired the first code enforcement officer. I know that back in a grand jury investigation back 2007, 2008, it was recommended that City of Livingston hire a code enforcement officer. And why it's taken so long, it's beyond me, so congratulations on that for hiring a code enforcement officer because it was recommended in that investigation because there were some wrongdoings that were going on. And moving forward, we don't need that in our chambers, amongst staff, we don't need that anywhere.
Yeah.
So thank you so much. And again, a bigger shout out for our police explorers. That's how we get our youth involved in careers in law enforcement. So as much as we want programs that give our youth a positive direction, we want to be able to provide that and knowing that we're kind of weeding them in, using them as feeders to possibly become officers within their own hometown, what better way? Thank you.
Yep. If I could also add to the graffiti, you mentioned that there's some graffiti, so we are in contact with Public Works and the process is if it's on private property, so it's like on a, there's a residence in, just up the road that has some graffiti tagged on the wall, so today I think we sent out five notices to the homeowners, given us the permission to clean that up, and we can't go on there until that's sent out, so, but I know Public Works in the past has done a really good job of getting it cleaned up and I've talked to other agencies and gang members themselves and discussed why you tag or why don't you tag here and why the city has been so good. It's because they do tag and it's cleaned up quick and that does make a difference, so.
Anyone else? And actually something that I just wanted to add, there's also a resident that volunteered to clean up and paint over some of that graffiti, you know, it was his neighbors, but you know, so there's also people out in the community that are really looking to look after how the city looks and it's great, so it's also another big shout out to people who are volunteering to clean up the graffiti for their neighbors and other than that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have city manager announcements and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Tactin Chief Ramirez, he's done an incredible job leading the men and women of the police department. I know you've heard me tell you that in person, but I just wanted to publicly extend my appreciation to you and everything that you've done in the police department and thank all the men and women in the Livingston Police Department as well as everybody else at City Hall, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have city council members announcements and reports. Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates from the REC Commission meeting. There are currently four vacancies, so they are actively looking for new members. If you find yourself interested and wanting to participate and help with these events and help plan these events, please reach out. You can get an application from City Hall or it's also available online. There was some goal setting that was done at the last meeting, which Jackie will be updating us on, but no, that will be foreshadowing the rest of the year. And lastly, this Thursday, the eighth, there will be registration for flag football, for youth flag football here in chambers from five to eight in the evening. Please come on in if you're interested, try and see how much interest is out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rod?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I don't have really nothing to report, but I do want to say thank you for Public Works, for the storms that we had this weekend, getting all the drains cleared and, you know, helping out with the flooding, getting the pumps out there. Fire Department also for everything, you know, they did, I heard sirens going off this weekend as well, and PD, so that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have councilmember Soto.
I do have a question for councilmember JT Mann. Your appointment for the Merced Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, is there any updates on that?
Nothing to report right now, Maria.
Have they been conducting meetings?
I'll be working with Monica to see exactly when the next meeting will be and I can report back.
Thank you.
Of course.
Next week will be the LAVCO meeting. There have been, so I'll report on that after the meeting is held. The League of Cities, I do get the emails on several events that are being held. Again, I need to be able to pick and choose our alternate to see how we can best work and get the information back to the council. Stephen's really good about sending out the information, we just have to be able to utilize that and see how, what's best for the City of Livingston. I did attend the Board of Supervisors meeting today and part of my reasons for attending was to ensure, and I can't reiterate this enough, is to convey the message that our chambers, our schools, our public, our citizens have the right to safety. And I can appreciate that our police departments is in communications with our school districts so that that message is in our schools. Because what prompted me to do this is because social media, I've seen a couple of my friends have some of their own children running for their school elected bodies, you know, vote so and so for student council president, or vote so and so for activities director. You know, it starts out in junior high, that's where I got my start. I was in student council in junior high. And then it goes on to high school if they're encouraged to stay within leadership positions. And I know that my own children and possibly many of yours and yours out there have opted to run for those types of positions. It starts early and we can't, and we should be able to encourage that. And students, as they get older, should they look to city councils, commissions, other committees that either they're appointed or elected to, should know that they're safeguarded, that these areas where we conduct business at all forms of government are safe. So I know that over the course of less than a year, there have been other elected that have come forward and said things or even presented silence on issues that may have affected me as a sitting council member, one of which is happened at the Board of Supervisors meeting with a Board of Supervisors. And it's unfortunate that we don't hear any reports coming from them because they do have an allotted amount of time here to come and speak. But my point is, our youth are coming up, they want leadership positions, we encourage leadership positions, and as long as council chambers feel unsafe for people to approach, if they fear that they're going to come to the lectern and their voices not be heard falls on deaf ears, or if they fear within city halls that they're going to be attacked by elected, again, those kinds of conversations need to go through our city manager in which he will take direction on that. That's why we have separation of city manager and our form of government here. Our council chambers need to be safe. We need to provide that type of environment within our chambers, within our schools, so that when our children see that we can work together without electeds coming forward and putting them in harm, we need safe spaces. And I'm glad that I'm able to use this opportunity to say this, our youth depend on it, there are upcoming leaders. And for me, as a woman, I need to be safe here as well. And I'm speaking for all people that want to speak on their voices, that they will be heard and that they shouldn't fear any one of their local government people that represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Putain Samra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, I'm not sure if it was Saturday or Sunday, I went to Ben, everything was good at the park across the street. I wake up, there was graffiti. What's even more pleasing was there was already staff, public works people taking it out. And that was like 8:30, 8 o'clock in the morning that they were already wiping it out, so that's fast. So I want to thank however it was coordinated, to everybody in the city to take that out. I know that it was gang graffiti because we know the symbols, but thank you to all to remove that right away. And then another note, I think the mayor owes me a thank you. Mr. Mayor, at the last MCAG meeting, you know I'm an alternate? I was volunteered. I tried to get out of it by saying I'm just an alternate, they said we don't care. So if I wasn't there, you would have been volunteered, so you owe me, okay?
I saw that and I'm glad they volunteer you because you need to attend more meetings.
No, but, and that, basically a lot of it is, there's a lot of movement on MCAG to move forward with cleaner buses. As you know, there are some electric buses, but for other buses that go longer distance, they're looking at hydrogen. And there is some money that's being used from, coming from the feds and the state and the Measure V. And I still get a chuckle from the model from the Measure V, you know, for zero emissions buses. If you can't smell me, thank Measure V, you know, so whoever came with this, kind of unique and I kind of like it, you know, but it always gives me a chuckle, but that's been the biggest thing that the MCAG is working towards right now. And of course, we had updates on the, on our, on our landfills. It's amazing how much garbage we're getting from over the hill from Baria into the Billy Wright. In fact, I think we're getting more from out there than we are generating locally. So I know they're looking at it and, you know, and, but anyway, those are the kind of things that MCAG is working on and I will be attending and then I will look forward to a nice, warm, thank you candy from the mayor, okay? Thank you, sir.
Well, let me just say, let me just say, thank you. Okay. On the 25th, I attended the California Transportation Commission meeting and dinner at the City of Modesto, and it was good to learn a little bit more about what the California Commission, Transportation Commission does. A lot of times it's, you know, there's too many commissions, there's too many groups, state, county and local groups and it's, but I was able to learn a lot. So, and it was good because I was also able to talk with the few people that I will be meeting with in the future to, as we plan years ahead, when, once we have our train stop here. So, you know, and that is one of the things, one of the things is that we need to continue planning ahead and not just wait until, okay, now it's going to be built, okay, now what are some of the other things that we need to be aware of or have or be concerned about? So a lot of those things need to be planned ahead of time, you know, three to five and sometimes even more years. So that was very interesting. And the following day, on the 26th, I had a meeting and thank you for, to the staff from Congressman Duarte for answering my request to meet with us here at City Hall and, you know, we continue working on our future needs. It's, we still need a lot of help to be able to bring more funding into the city, whether it's for safety, for water infrastructure or for some of the other things. And it was a very productive meeting and we got a few things, a few recommendations as far as, especially as a couple of our council members will be attending the One Voice trip to Washington and which I will be sharing that information in regards to the few projects that this council selected to ask funding for. And yesterday I had a meeting with the PG&E's Local Government Affairs person, Mr. Alonso, and with that said, you know, part of our conversation was, we normally try to keep up, meet once a month or twice or every two months just to kind of see what are some of the programs that PG&E is working on in our, some of the plans for our areas and I knew that that morning, since, well, since the night before, because of the winds and the rains, there was a PG&E pole that, and thanks to Public Works for the support and addressing the concern to that PG&E pole, getting damaged and almost falling on a home and later I found out that it was because, well, in part because of the winds and the rains, but also because it was just too old and it got rotten and it just wasn't strong enough to hold the, because of the wind. And, but it was, PG&E crews were sent out, it was assessed and, you know, and then later they came back and had it replaced. So I know that he had been in communications with the city manager and Public Works Director, so it was good to hear a good, positive result out of something that happened with, that wasn't, that could have been more damaging. And next, I just want to say thanks to the city staff, you know, Public Works and PD for working together, not only for, in regards to graffiti, you know, but also when some of the other offices need help, you know. I know that the last couple of weeks, it's just, PD and Public Works, it just seems like I've been bombarding you guys with, with just FYI, here you go and, you know, just concerns, but I think that's positive because, you know, we're getting a lot more feedback from the community, so I'm just hoping that, you know, you don't feel overwhelmed like I'm sending you guys too much, too much stuff to look at, but, you know. And once again, and lastly, just thanks to the residents who have been reaching out with different concerns and, you know, even all of us cannot be out there all the time and by them letting us know what some of those concerns are, we can get to look into them and... look into them and hopefully find a solution. And, and then just bear with me, I know that I normally, when, when like people reach out, I, I normally respond within an hour or so, you know. Sometimes because of some of my responsibilities, I'm not able to respond right there and then, but I always respond within, within a very short time, at the most, within 24 hours. Thanks again. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or the city, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda council. What is your wish in regards to the consent agenda? We have items one, two, three, and four.
Make the motion to approve the consent.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mayor Protem Samra. Is there a second?
I just have a, a comment to make. We haven't had minutes. I know this has been discussed before. We do have an appointed city clerk, of which this council, with the exception of myself, placed here. However, we do not have those meeting minutes. And I'm going to go back to that grand jury investigation in 2007, which involved, our mayor at the time was Rodrigo Espinoza, and also Mayor Protem Samra at that time, which was made a recommendation for those meeting minutes to be made available. So again, we're going back to things that were supposed to be in place but never have been. And so I do have an issue, even though Monica's working hard, so thank you, Monica, for, for taking the, taking over the responsibilities of the person that was appointed by the four of you here. And I know you, Musiu's not here to answer for why he's not here, but this is someone you appointed to do a job. We've already, I beat this till it's, till something gets done. We haven't approved any meeting minutes for quite a while, and this was a problem that we were facing with the previous city clerk that refused to do the job by state code. So I just want to make sure that that's pointed out. Was recommended that this job get done for the city of Livingston back in 2007, 2008 in a grand jury investigation.
So we have a motion on the floor.
I can second that motion.
A motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Samra, second by Councilmember Mann. Roll call, please.
Mayor, before we go to roll call, can we do public comment?
Yes, thank you. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda item on the phone? Here and now, I'm coming back into the chamber. Any public comment in the chamber in regards to the consent agenda items? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number five, consideration of a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute an agreement with, with public opinion strategies for polling research regarding a potential Livingston sales tax measure. Staff recommendation to approve resolution.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is item number five on the agenda tonight. So a few issues that I just wanted to put out, facts as well for the, the mayor and the councils, as well as the community. Merced County has informed the city that it will need to contribute $750,000 to accommodate additional staffing needed at Livingston Station 96. The new staffing levels are because of directives from Sacramento. In the absence of $750,000 from the city, the county may consider options such as consolidation of Station 96 personnel to another station, thereby closing Livingston Station 96. The last signed agreement between the city of Livingston and Merced County Fire for Fire Protection Services expired in 1995. The city is currently desiring to partner with the county on the submittal of a SAFER grant, which would fund additional staffing needed at Station 96 for a limited term. And then finally, a new sales tax measure may generate additional opportunities for the city of Livingston to enter into its own agreements with neighboring fire agencies, develop its own fire department, or other alternatives that the council may see fit. A few items of background. On February 7, 2023, an item was brought forward to the council for fire staffing augmentation at a cost of $399,903. Before the item was considered by the council, the item was pulled from the agenda that evening by previous management staff here at the city of Livingston. On March 7, 2023, Merced County informed the city that it would need to provide over $700,000 of funding for staffing. The city was also provided a memo from Cal Fire regarding changes to the minimum staffing level that resulted in the additional costs that they provided. Since that time, the city has been requesting budget information and details related to the proposed increase from Merced County and Cal Fire. The council appointed Mayor Protem Grupal Samra and Councilmember Jason Roth to a sales tax ad hoc committee to fund services for the additional staffing needed, and I believe the date of that was August 15, 2023. So a few additional items of background. You'll see that there's a few things that are coming into play with respect to this item, one of which is another ad hoc established by the city of Livingston council. In the master tax sharing agreement, and by way of practice for decades, the fire parcel tax revenues, which is paid by property owners in the city of Livingston, there is about $1 million that's retained by the county. So that tax is remitted to the county, and the county retains all of that revenue stream from city of Livingston property owners. A key point that is very much a policy issue for the council is that the lack of flexibility in terms of having that revenue stream remitted to the city or some other mechanism in place means that there's a lack of flexibility and that the city of Livingston has limited options for fire service delivery. On the general fund side of the city's budget, in fiscal year 2324, the city allocated $107,000 in expenditures to fire expenses for Station 96. The proposal from the county means that the city would need to allocate an additional $750,000 of general fund monies for this operation. So you can see the 1 million in terms of the fire parcel tax revenues plus the 750 would go towards the fully staffed, staffing at Station 96. On the far right area, you'll see that there's a number of policy considerations that the council should be aware about, and those includes master tax sharing language, fire parcel tax. As the ad hoc is discussing a potential master tax sharing agreement, that is a policy consideration for the council, whether the council prefers to have language related to fire parcel tax embedded in, in agreement that allows the county to retain all of that revenue stream. The sales tax measure for the generation of additional funding for additional staffing is also a policy consideration for the Livingston City Council. There's opportunities for service delivery in alternative forms, so whether that be through an agreement with the county provided by Cal Fire, whether that's some sort of other service delivery agreement, similar to other agreements, similar to the city of Atwater, where they have a direct agreement with Cal Fire, or some other mechanism by which the council determines the best service delivery model for the city of Livingston. There are some equity considerations that are very relevant to this policy consideration. We know that the 1 million as I referenced plus the 750 is approximately $1.8 million in total costs. So when we look at an entire fire station total cost, is it equitable in terms of the dollar amount that's being asked from the city of Livingston when we know that approximately 40% of those calls do occur in the county? So that's a consideration for the council to think up or to consider in terms of what's equitable for the city of Livingston. And then finally, the, the big question is, what is the appropriate level of staffing for fire department response? Staff can make recommendations in terms of adequate level of staffing for fire department personnel, but ultimately, that is a council policy consideration to take up in terms of what are the needs, what are the requirements, what does the council perceive those requirements to be for the residents in the city of Livingston? Some more background on the sales tax ad hoc committee. They were appointed on August 15, 2023. They've done a preliminary review of projected revenues provided by HDL. It's been a very service-level review of, or preparation of revenues from HDL. We didn't want to allocate too much time and get ahead of the council because obviously we wanted to get direction from the council as to which direction to go in. The ad hoc committee did provide direction after reviewing the revenues to gather information related to polling firms and determining what is the community's appetite for a potential sales tax measure. The committee reviewed those proposals, and they made a recommendation to the council, which is included in your backup material. There were two proposals that were provided that were, that are both in the background. The costs ranged from $12,000 all the way up to $25,000. The ad hoc has recommended public opinion strategies, and the ad hoc did request that the survey be completed or provided in Punjabi as well as in Spanish. Based on the recommended firm to do this research, it is public opinion strategies. Their scope of work will entail surveying approximately 100 to 150 registered voters in the city of Livingston, approximately 30 questions, approximately 12 minutes in length. The deliverables include survey results, cross tabs, and analysis of survey results. The costs equal $12,000 to $13,000, and there's an asterisk there because there's an updated resolution that's on the council's dais. After the feedback from the ad hoc committee, we did confirm with the consultant about including Punjabi and Spanish. The recommendation from this polling firm is that the survey be provided in Spanish as well as ensuring that the Indian population demographic is reflected in the survey capture when they capture and do all the survey work. So the next steps, and these are just general broad next steps because obviously we know that there will be much, many more steps included here. If the council were to take the recommendation from the ad hoc, the staff would work with the city attorney's office in developing an agreement that is approved as deformed by the city attorney. We would work with the, with public opinion strategies to develop the survey and deploy that survey. We would gather the results. We would present that information and that data to the council, and we would then take direction from council. Based on direction from council, there will be necessary follow-up items to be prepared, assuming that the council does direct additional work for this item. There will be additional work required by the city attorney that will be, that will be forwarded to the county registrar of voters for inclusion on a November ballot. Some people may look at this and say, "Well, you know, why are you doing this in February, and what's the urgency here?" There's many steps that are here. We want to give the city attorney enough time, the city council enough time, and we want to have enough time. If the council did move forward on this and they wanted to have an education consultant or an education firm on board to educate the community about this, we wanted to provide enough time so that the council wasn't up against the 11th hour trying to do multiple steps here. A few final remarks that I wanted to add here, because there are a number of moving parts that are here, and we wanted to make sure that everybody knew about these multiple different moving parts. The SAFER grant is being pursued in partnership with the county. That SAFER grant would provide funding for, I believe it's three years of the additional staffing that's needed. The council will recall that a few, I think it was the last meeting, they did identify the SAFER grant as a priority for the MCAG One Voice Trip, so we are continuing to pursue that with the county of Merced. The existing fire parcel tax being retained by the county does limit the city's options in terms of what options it has in the delivery of fire services to the community of Livingston. Again, there's some fundamental policy questions for the council in terms of what is the council's desired level of fire service for the community. This polling action would be used to determine resident sentiment related to fire service, a potential fire tax or a potential tax, and other necessary information that could help the council make an informed decision based on which direction to go on into the Again, this polling item is to help build a potential situation where the council could have the most flexibility in terms of what the best level of service delivery is for the city of Livingston as it relates to fire services. So this opportunity would allow for a new revenue stream, and it would allow the city council to determine how it sees the provision of fire service, services delivered best to the community. Right now, there is a bit of limited options as it relates to what option the council has. This is by no means an approval of a tax. Any sort of tax measure must be approved by the voters. So even if the council, and this is just a hypothetical situation, and even if the council felt that this was the right way to go, the voters are ultimately up, make that decision as to whether they would tax themselves for this, this opportunity. I do want to note a couple things. I do want to say that our paid call firefighters are a key component of our fire delivery system, so I want to make sure. I know that we've got one here. I want to make sure that they know that they are a key part of our system and that they are very much valued by the city of Livingston. And I also want to say that the Cal Fire team has been incredible. Battalion Chief Brian White and Engineer Robert Nguyen have been great assets to the city of Livingston, and we stay connected with them in terms of, you know, how to best provide options for, you know, improvements in areas that, whether it's community engagement, what we can do to just improve fire service delivery in the community. And so I think this is kind of a pattern, is just some questions that the council may want to consider as the council's talking about this item. Fundamentally, what level of service does the council wish to provide to the community as it relates to fire services? Does it wish to have fire prevention? What level of staffing on an apparatus? What level of staffing on an apparatus, 2O, 3O? What type of staffing provision does the council see fit? What are the fire service needs for the city of Livingston? One thing, and I mean no disrespect or disparagement to anybody, Cal Fire or Merced County, but the city of Livingston is limited in its option in terms of the fact that Merced County has a model of fire services that emphasizes fire suppression. And some of the other things that we know are part of delivering comprehensive fire services include, you know, fire prevention, education, involvement at any level, whether it be the schools or visiting businesses, you know, those are different levels of service that there's an associate or a respective cost associated with that. Does the city wish to continue having fire services provided via Cal Fire through Merced County? As I just mentioned, the county service model emphasizes suppression. Does the council wish to explore higher levels of service in the future? How would we get there? Does the council wish to gather public sentiment regarding a potential sales tax measure to fund fire services? This is particularly this item in front of you tonight. Is the city council interested in expanding the current opportunities for fire service delivery in the city of Livingston? So how does it desire for those services to be deployed? Does it wish to deploy those services via city personnel, potentially Livingston Fire Department? Does it wish to have those services deployed via a contract with the county? Does it wish to have those services deployed via Cal Fire directly, similar to what you might find in neighboring cities such as Atwater? So those are all policy questions that the council may want to think about and consider. That concludes my presentation. Mayor and council, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Counsel, are there any questions, comments? This time before I go out to the public.
Go ahead, go to the public first.
Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to item number five? Anyone on the phone? Okay, hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Any public comments in regards to this item in the chamber?
Yeah, Bob Wallace. One quick question, Mayor. If this contract had expired in 1995, why did Cal Fire wait this long to bring that to the city of Livingston's attention? So it makes me wonder, because going back to when I attended all the city council meetings before I went on planning commission, I thought when we reached 15,000 people, our staffing had to be two at the fire department. Am I right or wrong? And if it was two for the last two or three years, what planning has been done to? Because we've known for the last two or three years, we're going to hit the 15,000 person, person living, resident living in the city. And my next question would be for the city manager. How many contracts do we have that are expiring? Do we have, does the city council have a list of every contract that we are obligated to, when their expiration date is? Is it the city's responsibility to get it? Or is this Cal Fire in this state situation, their responsibility to notify the city? But either way, the city should have a complete list, every contract, every expiration date, whether it's three years out, two years out, that should be a living document that somebody should know about and should be working on there. I can't believe the city missed that since 1995. That just sounds stupid to me.
Thank you for your comments. And then there are some questions that might be that we might be able to answer at the end or a public comment. Is there any additional public comments in regards to this item in the chamber? Jackie? All right, then, I guess that means no. All right, okay. Bringing it back, closing the public comment on item number five of 831, bringing it back to the dais. Counsel, well, you know, there were some questions that were answered, that were asked, and I think those are some of the same questions that we have, that I have, you know, since this one particular contract that expired back in 1995. Well, what I can tell you is that personally, I've been inquiring about this contract at least for two years with changes in the city. You know, some conversations were started, but then, you know, then later had to restart it. And and as you might know, just gathering meetings with with other agencies is pretty hard just to be able to match calendars for one reason or another. But what I can tell you is that 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 is a work in progress. That is something that it is being addressed by this council, by this city staff, but it's it's not something that could can be fixed overnight. Hopefully, it doesn't take too much longer than, I don't know, 29 years as it has so far, you know? And I do believe that that any agreements by any agencies should be on paper and not just, you know, like verbal agreements, whether that was the case or not, I don't know. But you're right, you know, there there should be a document somewhere on file to where anyone coming back in the future or future councils or or anyone can look at and see specifically what that agreement was. There was another question in regards to. Do you have what the other questions were?
A list of other agreements that are being expired by the city.
Well, there's more, but once again, those are some of the items that we're working on, once again, to be able to have them on paper. And, you know, one of them is the tax sharing agreement. We're working on that right now. I know that with the previous council, I was part of the ad hoc committee, but in two years, we were never ever, we were never able to meet one once for different reasons. Since this new council came on board, that was re-initiated. Mayor Potem and myself are part of that that committee. So we started conversations and meetings and it's a it's in the works. But and then I don't know if there's anything else that any city manager, did I miss anything you might need to add?
A lot of this is speculation on my part, but I would venture to say that as the parcel tax revenues were being retained by the county, I believe there was an adequate revenue stream in terms of providing fire service by the county. So I do believe because the revenues were being retained by the county that it may not have been a financial issue at that time, and that's why it may not have been brought to the surface from their part. That's just purely speculation, but that's my guess.
Thank you. So counsel, are there any questions, comments in regards to this item?
Of course there is. As a resident, you want to tell me we're thinking of taxing you more? I'm going to be the first one to say, what? Tax us more? I believe in our first responders. I believe in our areas of our fire department, which which at all the levels, county, Cal Fire, our volunteers. But one thing, you put that word out that we're going to tax you more, but what doesn't make sense to me and jokingly presented, it's been 30 years. It shouldn't take this long to to come to a decision based on the information that we currently have and that was presented tonight, that Livingston is doing more, Livingston residents are doing more than their fair share to the county. So when you want to, when you want to ask what is equitable for the city of Livingston, we are paying more than our fair share according to the slide that was presented, I believe it was slide number three. So in my time on council, I've heard tax sharing agreement, tax sharing agreement, there is no agreement. It failed when in 2019. Nothing has been updated, and that's been a reoccurring discussion in every part that we have discussed on this dais within the last, I believe in the last year that has been pointed out, where over three decades has been a failure in our leadership. Our residents deserve better. The people that know this information needed to have shared it with us. That's transparency. We're being told that it doesn't, the tax sharing agreement, no, we haven't come to a decision. I was one of, I was on the council that said that doesn't make sense. And with more information that's being brought forward and how it almost appears as if Livingston residents are getting the short end of the stick here for services that we're providing to the rest of the county and they want us to pay more? Make this make sense, and it makes sense when it's presented to us in a way that is transparent, where we have all these moving parts put together and we know who's controlling it. So when it's put to, I don't remember what was said, but we're not given a choice. I believe something to that effect was on one of the slides. It's not that that we're going to have the choice in the matter of what kinds of service. Well, we do, we're the policymakers up here. So what I also want to point out is that we do have options, and I know that it's in our mini code, I brought it up at a previous meeting, that our Livingston Volunteer Department is our fire department. And if we want to take that seriously, because I know, without actually polling the residents, one of their biggest concerns that has been brought to council is that we need our own, we have our own fire station. Everybody in the county, we're sending our services and we're providing it throughout the county. So our Livingston Fire Department does exist. It's in our mini code. They are our fire department. So if we're going to take this seriously and up the staff, and I know it's coming down the pike here that it should be a 3O staffing, so why would we consider a 2O staffing when in about a year or so it's going to be three? So we should work towards staffing our own Livingston Fire Department because we do have that revenue stream that is being held hostage by the county. And that's what it looks like to me. So that is, I know that we're paying more than than we should on this and our services are going throughout the county. So I don't know what other stations are doing and closing down the station. To me, that is ridiculous. That is our Livingston Fire Department, it is our own fire department. We need to staff our own fire department, 3O staffing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I know that there was, I think, two people on this dais that were appointed for the tax sharing revenue. Is there any movement on that at all? And also, I would like to see us have a self-sustained fire department here in Livingston without the county. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
What Councilman Soto said is correct to some degree, what Mr. Wallace said is correct to some degree. 15,000 people we have approximately, I get it, and we have one firefighter, but you still have to take in account that we have the volunteers that go out as well. So they do count as personnel as well. They are paid fire, they are paid on-call firefighters. Now, whether this council decides to move forward with our own fire department, where we contract directly with Cal Fire or whatever the makeup we want to go with, combination of volunteers, whatever it is, it doesn't, whatever we come up with, it don't matter what we have in far as our our parcel tax, because what we pay now would not be sufficient if we were to contract ourselves either. So you can, or anybody can argue, I'm not going to be taxed. Well, that's fine. We get it. However, if we're putting 1 point, around 1 million, whatever the number is, you know, just for lack of discussion, and you're going to put in two and someone mentioned, well, we need to go to three, that's close to 1.7 million a year? No, I mean, I'm sorry, 2.7 million a year. So if we're getting million dollars in parcel tax without the additional revenue, does somebody want to explain how we're going to be hitting the general fund at 1.7 million every year? You know, it's it's a lot more complicated than just do it, you know? Yeah, we have been maybe paying more than our fair share and recently it has. And if you don't think that question was raised, then you don't know how the facts either. That question was raised many years ago in saying, tell us how much we pay in parcel tax. And even recently, when we met with the county regarding our, they couldn't give us clear numbers to show how misinformation was given to us back then. They were, they were charging us for fuel when the fire trucks were filling up at our gas pumps, including the county trucks, but yet they were charging us for fuel. And we were getting charged for building use when it was our building, you know? But they stopped that, when we brought that up the next day, county trucks were a Chevron filling up over there and not at our fuel pumps. So there has been some information. Now, we're not taxing people, we're asking the people what type of service you want. All this is to say, let's poll the people to see if they're interested. And if they are, or whatever information we get, council makes a decision, goes to our Livingstonians and say, are you interested in paying more because here's our challenges? And they have the every right to say yea or nay. So when you said, we're going to, you know, no, no, we're not forcing anybody, we're asking for them to volunteer to give that money if they wish. If they don't... If they don't, well, then that'll be the challenge, whatever comes in. It doesn't matter if we contract to Cal Fire or through the county. If we contract directly with Cal Fire, we'll be paying 100% of the 2-0 cost. Because county will not be contributing anything to it. And if we go to 3, county's still not going to contribute anything because there'll be a, 3 firefighters responding within 3 square miles. That's going to be an enormous cost to the city. And, and based on that, this is the reason we proposed, or I proposed last time, because if we don't move forward with this and ask the volunteer, the people to take the call on it, see if they want to do this, then we'll have to see what other, what other options are. And that is the decision we're making, not arbitrating, I'm not going to do this. That's just plain wrong, okay? It's just plain wrong way to act. I'm asking our council, along with Councilmember Roth, the subcommittee that you appointed, the ad hoc, rather, I'm sorry, in saying, help us poll the citizens to see if they're interested and bring that data back to the council so we can decide whether to move forward or not, to put that measure on the ballot and for the people to decide. That's all this is right now. So I'm asking the council to please approve the $13,000 in uncommitted reserves. We know it's uncommitted, to move forward, at least get that information from the residents and how they feel. And at the same time, we as a council are free to explore, are we going to contract directly with Cal Fire? Or are we, can we go to another jurisdiction like Atwater or somebody and say, can we piggyback on your contract to get firefighters in here instead of the county? We have options. But no matter what option we choose, it's going to cost us more than we are paying now than our, our parcel tax is going to cover. So unless we can afford to put that money in every year, year after year, we don't have choice but to go to the people. Otherwise, the general fund dollars, I don't know, how much do we have in general fund right now? Approximately? Around 3 million?
That's correct.
Yeah, so what, 3 million, we can wipe that in a couple of years and we'll be dead broke. So there's, there's a decision. So based on that, unless any of any comments, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution 2024, authorizing interest management to execute an agreement for public opinion strategies for polling research regarding potential Livingston sales tax measure.
So I have another comment, I know there's a motion on the floor. I, I'm not objecting to polling the residents because this is something that they are going to have to vote on in the end. But what I think is important to pull away from those key points that were presented was that there is no tax sharing agreement. So our taxes are being held at county. So how is that a tax, how is that fair to our, our residents that we're paying more than our fair share and there is no agreement in place? Why is that money being held at that level?
Mr. Lopez, you wish to respond or should I respond? To me, the agreement that was canceled in 2019 was that was canceled, but it does default back to the previous tax sharing that we have. We can't annex no property, but everything that was annexed was still under that agreement under 2019. Whatever was done before it was canceled, whatever's annexed, we still have that agreement. So we don't have a revenue sharing agreement to annex more property into the city, but it does not affect what's already within the city.
And City Manager, you had also stated that we have been requesting the agreement?
I, I just, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, to chime in because I think we're getting a little
Too far away from the original.
Too far away from the original item.
It's all about transparency.
I understand, but the current item before the council for consideration is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for public opinion strategies. So if we could come back.
I generally responded to that. We do have, it just doesn't, doesn't enter into new land. But for the current land, it still pans. So I still have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to call for the second?
Just one second because I hadn't
Sure, sure.
Hadn't had a chance to say, but I think you made a good point in, in, in coming back to the item to where this is not, we're not deciding on if we're going to tax anyone or not. It's just, you know, and I do believe it's the right thing to do, to be able to really get a clear message from the residents on what, how, how they feel and not just have this council discuss at a future, future item on how to proceed on whether or not to consider a tax or not. And then thinking that, well, that's how I, that's how we think, that's what the residents want. Even though, you know, but, but it's also very important, as someone mentioned before, it's, it's if, if we want additional services, those additional services have a cost. I mean, you know, it's and, and while asking for those additional services, we have to figure out and consider where those funds are going to come from. So, you know, just, just please keep that in mind that, that although we do need, actually, I do believe we, we need a second fire station. But, you know, we cannot even keep up with one, you know? So, I mean, we can wish all we want, but, but, you know, once we propose something, we should, we have to figure out also how to propose, how to, how we're going to get those funds to be able to have that, that additional request. So with that said, is there any additional comments, questions? So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item number six, discussion and direction regarding home occupation permits.
Thank you, Mayor. We received emails from council members regarding home occupation permits. As a general best practice, we're seeking formal direction from the council on whether the council wishes to have the city attorney look into this issue and provide some amendments or changes as identified by Mr. Gary Miller in his email, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, once again, I, you know, I appreciate the residents reaching out and, and I think it's, it's something that, that we need to consider for an update or at least for revision. This is another example, one of the things that, that we can update and really bringing it up to date and, and see and give our residents more options. So I think it's a good opportunity. Council, are there any comments, questions in regards to this item before I go off for public comment? Okay, I'll go out for public comment at 8:55 in regards to this item. Item number six, discussion and direction regarding home, home occupation permits. Any public comment on the phone? Hearing none, bringing it back to the chambers. Any public comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back at 8:56. Council, questions, comments?
I just, it, after reviewing this, like I said, many of our codes have not been updated. So in order to get up with the times of, of people wanting to provide their own types of creative entrepreneurships, their businesses, I do believe that we did need to look into this and support our residents that want to have a business, but we need to do it in a manner that is safe for our, our, our public. So again, looking at that and reviewing what needs to be done and in updating it and updating all our municipal codes. Where are we, by the way, with that? But yes, we want to be able to support our small businesses. And with this being in a home, we need to make sure that our, our community is, is safe with ever, whatever kind of craft that is being provided to the public.
Thank you. Council, any other questions, comments? So this is not an action item, just, just you guys just need direction. So I, I, I would recommend to have City Manager's Office and Legal look into this and then bring something back to the council to see what, bring back, bring back some recommendations on how we can not only update, but provide more opportunities for our residents to work out of their homes. Council?
I agree with the same that was just made, Mayor, but just want to add to that by also keeping the neighbors happy as well, right? Just kind of keeping that whole portion and, and looking into that as well. But totally for moving forward and, and thank you, Mr. Miller, for bringing this, bringing this forward.
Thank you. Okay, and then, and then probably then again, you know, maybe part of the research we could, or somebody else, or us, we can do besides legal, is kind of inquire with our other agencies nearby to see, you know, kind of see, seeing what they have and what are some of the things that, that work. And as Councilmember Mann mentioned, you know, also consider what the neighbors might think about. And for us to be able to have that included somehow in, in whatever it is that we consider in the, in the future. All right, so with that said, is that clear? Good, all right, thank you. So next, we have council direction on future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I've had a couple citizens reach out to me on the restrooms at Memorial Park. I'd like to see if we can bring that back and see if we can maybe get those refurbished, safety-wise, lighting-wise, doors, et cetera, and possibly get those fixed. They did tell me about a few safety concerns. So if we can bring that back and possibly make a decision on maybe revamping those bathrooms? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else this time? Seeing none?
Hold on.
Yes.
I, I do know that one of the contracts that are going to be coming up for renewal or evaluation, probably renewal, is the one that the agreement with the Livingston Unified School District in regard to the child development centers that we have. I, I'd like that to be a discussion on how we can utilize our city building over on, on Walnut. And also the, all the information being provided on all the city facilities that we have so that we can best use them to capacity. Senior Center opening it up, just, just new ideas so that we can have that for a discussion. And the Child Development Center contract that's going to, I think it's in May. So if we start looking at that and figuring out how we can be in better partnerships in that agreement, I'd like to see that come before the council. Also, I had brought it up before, I was out front of the council chambers. I do notice that, that we have an area where there's a plaque. I remember bringing this up, there is a centennial plaque that was purchased and I, and I forget why we're not using that to celebrate our 100th year, putting that on display. Can, can you remind me? Or can we have that discussion once more as a future? Also, if we want to take our water issues more seriously, I would like to see if, if we can add as council members for us to be present. I know it's probably a volunteer basis that we attend more meetings. I mean, adding more work to what our council members already do. But if we can be at the table at other meetings that are conducted in our county, I know that there's a Merced Sub Basin that we need to be able to hear about and so that that information is shared. I know that JT Mann said that he's going to be reaching out to Monica about some water, the, the water meetings, but if we can be more proactive in our presence to know that we are responding to the water issues amongst this council. So if we can have a better selection, I don't know, of these appointments that, that were made and it's just a, we need to have more water, our presence at water issue-related boards and commissions.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned 9:03. And we're going to retire ourselves to a closed session and then we'll be back to report out.
Hold, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
We have to announce out closed session and open it for public comment first.
All right, thank you. So we have the last item for closed session. We have item number seven, public employee performance evaluation. Title interim city manager pursuant to government code section 54957. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this specific item? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber, any public comment in regards to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at 9:04.
Just one comment. I know earlier I had asked, you know, the, the whole change in time, the 6 versus 6:30. And then we came into our regular meeting about 10 minutes late. After I had requested why the change in time and why it was put to a meeting afterwards, it was shared with me that the, that this item was requested to be at 6:30 by Councilmember Jason Roth. Had I known that before, or who? Who requested that?
So the, the item that's going in a closed session right now, it was requested to be held at the end of the council meeting?
So, yeah, so it was requested to be at the end of the meeting. Had I been told that sitting up there, then I wouldn't have taken up the time discussing it and then putting, pushing our first closed session item back and then coming out 10 minutes late. So had I known that it had been requested to be put at the end, it, it would have already been addressed. Again, the communication amongst us is, 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 needs a little bit more improvement.
Maybe that can, that can improve if some of those questions were asked beforehand and they can still be asked during the council meeting. So I find that to always be helpful. So personally, I always, when I have questions about any items on the agenda, I personally ask questions beforehand and then I still ask questions on the dais for informational purposes, so that's just an idea. Thank you.
I, I believe I did that, but if it would have been straight out, it was requested to be put at the end, then I would have dropped it.
You asked?
Thank you.
We're going to go to closed session, 9:06, and we'll be back.